I'd like to call the November 2nd, 2017, St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Service Committee to order. Would you please call a roll, Chris?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Hydeman?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greitath?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the Human Services Agenda this evening?
Make a motion we accept the agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the time in our agenda where we allow citizens to address the Human Services Committee. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the Commission on Human Services Matters this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. We have an item, MSU Extension Program Assignments, Mr. Bixler.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some updates. For the last seven years, I've been the District Coordinator, which covers the entire thumb, five counties, and I'm relinquishing that responsibility effective October 16th. So it was just a little while ago. I'm assuming a role in the district and across the state in our Greening, Michigan Institute. I'll be teaching again, and I'll be providing services in government and public policy, as well as our community food systems work. So I'm housed here, I will continue to be housed here, and travel around the thumb and other parts of the state delivering specific programs in those two major areas. And so I want to give you a little taste of some of the work I'll be doing, and I passed out a flyer here that advertises a movie, a documentary actually, called "The Food Evolution." And frankly, it's a movie that talks about the large GMO debate that's going on in our wonderful country, has been for a number of years. I'm not here to tell you that there's a side, one way or the other. The documentary is very good, I've seen it. MSU does not take a position on GMOs. We believe that organic provides a niche, so we're not pro or against organic either. However, there's lots of folks out there that have been talking about this, particularly on the Internet, Facebook, and frankly, a lot of the information that they have is frankly false. So I hope that they will take the opportunity to watch this documentary, and yourselves as well, as, you know, the scientific community kind of ushers through the science and the information that everybody needs. Frankly, if you realize, we're all genetically modified ourselves. And if we weren't, we wouldn't be here. And if you think about that for a second, I can explain that scientifically, but I want you to think about it. And so this documentary provides information and facts with regards to how genetically modified organisms began way back in the day on the Hawaiian Islands to save the papaya crop. And then it also talks about organic as well. So take advantage of the opportunity to see the documentary. This is a viewing that's happening over in Lansing. I will be there. However, I'm sure the show at some point will be shown on PBS, and I'd really encourage you to take advantage of watching it when it comes on. Any questions that I can answer for you? You may see my face, or a new Commissioner might see my face in 2018 because I'll be responsible for the new county Commissioner training as part of the government and public policy work team. So I'm still around, I'll be working with our EDAs across the district, including the EDA here on community food systems projects, and look forward to sticking around for a little while longer in St. Clair County in the thumb. Any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, good luck to you.
Thanks, Joe.
By the way, I'm sorry. So my position will be filled permanently, probably after the first of the year. Right now, there's somebody temporarily in my position as the District Coordinator. I think our finance people and Kerry probably have met Matt Chain. He looks a lot like me, only skinnier, doesn't have any hair, and he'll do a fine job until we find someone permanently. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Do we have any conceptual initiatives this evening? Thank you. We have no old business. We do have a new business item. This is Community Mental Health Board Appointment, and it's on the agenda for final action.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that Susan White be reappointed for the next term of office, as stated.
Support.
I would just say that when I first came on the board, I represented the Commission on the Community Mental Health Board, and Susan White came on at that time for a short period of time, and she was an excellent board member at that time. I guess she's left service and now she's returning again, but she's very involved in the community, and I think she'd make a good board member. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other Human Services Matters to be brought before our committee this evening? Mr. Greitath?
I would just like to, I don't want to say give a shout out because I'm not supposed to use that term, I guess, but I do want to give kudos to the Health Department for coming down to Algonac. They came down on two separate days. The first day they came down there on a Monday, and they passed out about 539 different inoculations for the hepatitis A because of the outbreak at a restaurant down there. They ran out and came back on Thursday and dosed out another 139. So it looks like somewhere around 660 people received that. If I'm not mistaken, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the serum came from the state of Michigan, but the Health Department actually came down and passed everything out, did it all. I think the last day they were down there, they came down with a staff of either 14 or 16 people. The Lions Club opened up their hall to them on both occasions and staffed for them so that they could come in there and do it. I just thought it was a great service for the community to see your Board of Health in action the way they were. So kudos to Greg, you, and the doctor, and the entire staff that put this thing together.
Thank you, Commissioner Greitath. There was also a nice letter to the editor about that, was very complimentary of the Board of Health, so thanks. Thanks for your service.
Just a comment about that, as I'm on the board, the first shot is 95% effective. So if you get that first shot, you're in good shape for the most part. There is a second shot that can boost it up even to a higher percentage if you want to pick up that last 5%. So get your vaccinations.
I wasn't looking at you specifically, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? Under information only, we have the October Points of Interest from the Health Department.
Make motion to receive and file.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Shall we receive and file the packets?
Motion to receive and file the packets.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Hydeman?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greitath?
Here.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Conceptual initiatives?
None.
None? We have no old business. New business, we have a few grants that we need to send on to the full board, and we have one that we're looking for, for final action. Item A, the Fiscal Year 2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Contract.
Make a motion we send that on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Is there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Fiscal Year 2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Subcontract with Bluewater DRP LLC.
I'd move we pass this on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant. I'll move that this grant agreement be sent on to the full board.
Second.
Motion and support. Any questions on this?
25.75% local match?
Yes, 10% coming from the commissary, from the sheriff, and the balance is coming from, out of the 25%, 15% is paid by, carries at Community Mental Health?
It's the Region 10.
Region 10, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The inter-agency agreement from Community Mental Health and Intervention Center, the Inmate Mental Health Services Agreement. I'll move that this agreement be sent on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any questions? Same as last year, it's just got a .85% increase. It's a pretty minor increase for, from year to year, when you're less than 1%. Almost as good as our health insurance going down. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, the County Child Care Fund Budget Approval. If you had a chance to look at this, we've already approved this prior, but there was a few changes that had to be made. A couple items had to be deleted for it to be sent on to get the money. So those changes have been made, and we're just being asked to do this for final action so that they can get it in on a timely manner.
Make a motion we approve this for final action.
Second.
We have motion and support. Are there any other questions? Do we need roll call? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tamian?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greitath?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Resolution 1728, the Peninsula Fiber Network for Central Dispatch 911. Tim's here, and he graciously said he'd love to talk if it was necessary, and I said it probably wouldn't be. This is what we talked about before, about an 18-month process from start to finish. So what we're asking is that we can actually get the resolution for final action at the next meeting, and this is just going to start the process for our new platform for the 911.
Make motion to forward it to the full board.
Support.
We have motion, support. Questions?
I had a question for Tina. No, I'm just kidding. Tina doesn't want to get up there. I didn't see a cost figure for any of this anywhere. Is there a cost figure? Greg, do you know?
The cost of this is actually taken care of, as far as the infrastructure, by the state's 19 cent surcharge they put on the phones. A portion of that goes towards the technical surcharge, so the companies that provide that 911 infrastructure, they recoup their fees out of that fund. So there's no cost for this to us to have this.
Okay, yeah, there is a cost in that house.
All I needed to know, thank you.
Couple, hang out there, I got a couple questions for you. Surcharge, I know they were talking about increasing the surcharge, I don't know if that's going anywhere.
The state is still working on that? The committee is supposed to meet on Thursdays to keep discussing that?
Okay.
And for those of you not aware, that's to increase the 19 cent surcharge to 25 cents.
Okay.
But the committees have been canceling on a regular basis that Thursday meeting.
Yeah, okay.
The MCBA, the Michigan Director's Site, has a lobbyist there that's monitoring it, and I know the county-
Yeah, no, I just saw a memo. Yeah, that's fine. Next question, too, I think all our pager issues are resolved now, I haven't heard anything more on that.
We're pager issues, we've gotten pretty good success out of that. Recently Kurt Fector, Afflector, with the unication, got involved, and he supplied a new software package for these pagers, and from Kimball, they're telling us the pagers are working like a dream now.
Good.
I have not had any complaints from Marine City, and the-
And I think that was where arguably we had the most issues down there, and I corresponded with Elaine and-
And every now and then we'll get a ghost, we call it false pager activation, but that's disappeared a lot since these software updates were done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none. Motion to receive and file?
Move.
Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So move. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, if you thought my meeting was fast, what was yours? I got over at 6:09.
You do your prep work, it goes much easier.
You're 97. You're the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee Meeting to order. And Sir, could you take the roll?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Greitath?
Here.
Mr. Hydeman?
Here.
Any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any citizen wishing to address the Committee on Environmental Public Works Matters? Seeing none. Do we have any updates from Commissioners? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives from administration? No old business, we'll move to new business. The first one is the 2017 Annual County at Large Drain Assessment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this item be sent on to the full board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding that? Bob Wiley isn't here, the County Drain Commissioner. So if you have, I'm sure you've got his telephone number, so you can contact him that way. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The next item is the Park and Recreation Commission Applications.
I move that we accept the three applications and send to the final board.
Okay.
For final action.
You want to do that for final action?
I think we got ballots, don't we?
Yeah, we're only going to have, I know I'm not going to be at the next meeting.
Either's Greg.
Either's Greg.
Let's do it for final action with the ballots tonight? Do we have ballots available?
We do.
We have ballots?
I second the motion to-
To do this for final action? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, would you be so kind to distribute the ballots? Oh, oh, we got it. That's right, this has to be-
Hope everyone's got their name on it, right?
Yes.
After what? We have, you have to turn it on to have to-
It's recorded how you voted.
Okay.
So is the proper action to?
You don't have to, it's-
It's part of the resolution, so-
Yes.
So this item's-
The appointment would be Melissa Hanners.
Thank you.
Steve, that's three. Three to say. Not necessary to say.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the 2018 Survey and Remonumentation, oh, tongue tied there, Grant Application and Grant.
I would move that this item be passed on to the full board meeting. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that this be passed on to the Raker Board. I would tell you that our county engineer, right?
Surveyor.
Surveyor is here. Check. Got it. And so if you have any questions, I'm sure he would be more than happy to answer them. If not, we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
He'll answer them plus or minus.
Plus or minus, there you go. Next item on the agenda is the-
Did we vote?
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Moving on to the DTNW Clearing and Grading Project Change Order for Final Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the, this item, the Clearing and Grading Project Change Order be approved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
I think we need a roll.
Roll. Any questions first before we go to roll call?
And this is for final action?
Yes, it was.
Was there some work being done out there earlier on clearing that site?
Yes, they have been out there working for a while. This change order is, they are going to need more topsoil to finish off what we need to do per the wetland permit.
Okay. Madam Clerk, what'd you take? Call a roll?
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tamian?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greitath?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
The Landfill Materials Procurement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Landfill Materials Procurement Resolution be sent on to the full board.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any questions?
I would just add that I ask a question about seeing the whole bid tabulation, and it was provided, and I appreciated that. I'd like to see in the full bid tabulation and not just who won which category of bids. I thought it was interesting to look and see what each bidder bid and who was the low. So I would like to see that in future reports as well. Is, like, when you look at this, and I'm sure there's, we're not seeing the full picture, there's two different bids for crushed concrete, and one person got 5,000 tons at $13.10 a ton, the other person got 1,500 tons at $6.50 a ton. I would like to see us get 6,500 at the $6.50, right? I mean, that's a big difference in, I don't know.
Did the bid tab go to everybody or just you?
Well, I'd like to see it in all the future reports, I think.
Right, no, I mean, this time, did it just go to you or did it go to all the Commissioners?
I got a memo from the sta-, I sent an email question, and I got a response. I don't know, I don't remember if it was copied to the whole Commission or not.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it.
Okay, we'll put it on, because this is going to the full board, so we'll include it on that agenda as well.
Yes, I just wanted to make the point, it's the first time I remember a report that we received that didn't actually have the bid tab in, and it just had the successful bidders, and I think it's kind of interesting to see how all those lined up from different contractors.
Yeah, that is an interesting observation that you're making in terms of the difference in cost for the crushed con- I wonder if it was just because-
Well, it could be different size crushed concrete, too, so.
Okay, could we have roll on yet?
Not with just eight of them.
Yes or no vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have the No Smith Creek Landfill Report this time. Any other environmental or public works matters that Commissioners would like to bring before the committee? Seeing none. Information only, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the-
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to receive and file packets regarding environmental or public works matters?
So moved and supported.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Hydeman?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Greitath?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
I can't hear.
Moving on to number two, additions, deletion, changes to the agenda. I see we have two items.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that Item 2A come under new business as Item 7H and 2B be Item 7I.
That support?
I support that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to number three. All right, you need to have motion to approve the agenda with the-
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Set. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. This time, move number three, Citizens to be Heard. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Do we have any updates? None. Any conceptual initiatives? None. No old business, so we'll move into 7A, new business. First one, 7A, St. Clair County Health Department Manning Table Change.
Mr. Chair, I move that this item be sent on to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Annual Renom.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move this to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving to 7C, Policy 342, Salary and Wage Revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this policy be sent on to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you want to give us an explanation or not?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask, it looked to me like most of the changes in here were housekeeping changes, taking the county administrator off and putting the human resources person on there, with the exception of, the only change I really saw was moving from step three to step four, and bringing people onboard. and bringing people onboard. But other than that, I didn't see anything significant. Am I missing?
That's correct. It was mostly housekeeping to reflect the fact that the county does now have an HR director. We are giving department heads more flexibility in allowing them to bring someone on at the middle of the scale if they have someone that's, you know, highly qualified. And we have also revised the encroachment policy to show it should be an 8% differential or two steps where it was four steps before.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7D, 2018 Budget Proposal.
Good evening.
Evening.
Before you tonight is a copy of our proposed 2018 General Fund Budget. Yesterday I emailed you all the budget highlights. I did include that in your packet there tonight as well. If you've had a chance to review that, you will have seen that our revenues next year are increasing by about 2%. However, we are expecting a decrease in our mileage rate due to the Headley Amendment. And at this point, we don't know what the reduction will be until probably spring of next year. So equalization has kind of provided us a percentage range of possibility and we have factored into the budget the worst-case scenario, which would be about a $250,000 loss. We felt that it was better to be safe than sorry there, so. With the additional revenue, we were able to offer wage increases to our employees through collective bargaining. And we were also able to address a few items that have increased in cost this year. Those items were inmate medical expenses and also the female inmate housing situation out at the jail as well as increased utility costs. Otherwise, departments will see status quo budgets next year. The public hearing will be next week and we'll be asking for final action on the budget next week as well. And then, of course, the special revenue fund budgets will be on the December agenda. Any questions?
When do we find out about the Headley?
Springtime next year.
Okay.
And do you have an idea at all on the Headley?
Equalization said it could be anywhere between a tenth of a percent to seven tenths of a percent. Seven tenths would equate to about a $250,000 loss, so.
And for those of us that really aren't sharp on Headley, the reason that we're getting the Headley is because our assessment through the county?
Exceeds the rate of inflation, so that just kind of brings them back in line.
Inflation or 5%, whichever is less, correct?
Yeah.
And just one question, this will be for 2018. From here, you said we'll have tax revenues, we're going to get a 2% increase which will equal approximately 1.2 million, but we've got an increase of 1.9 million from last year's budget.
Yes.
For 2017. And we're going to generate that 700,000 where?
A couple hundred thousand is in the Register of Deeds office. They're seeing increased revenue because the housing sales are up.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you over the HVAC system.
Sorry. I was telling him that it's 200,000 approximately is in the Register of Deeds office for increased revenue there for the housing sales that are increasing.
I still didn't understand that. I didn't hear the very last part of it.
My board is a lot older, so you have to.
Is the microphone not working or?
I'm right below the vent there and just the last sentence you.
Housing sales are up, so our revenue in the deeds office is up as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I can't hear you, Carl, could you please speak into the mic for this turn? All right, thank you very much. Any other?
I'm just going to make a comment and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up since Howard and I were back here in the good old days when we went through the budgets, Mr. Donlin, we wanted to kill each other when he'd walk all the rooms and they were, it was a real struggle. And kudos to Bill and Kerry for initially saying that they were going to sit down and work through the budget process and bring something back. I totally didn't believe them at the time. I'm like, this ain't going to happen. And then it worked well. I can tell you, I didn't receive one phone call again. I don't think I got one last year, maybe one the year before, but it's been a much smoother process moving forward and everybody working together, so. Just my little schmear.
All right, do we have any other comments? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
Good job, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel.
Moving on, 7E, Manning Table and Vehicle Fleet Changes for the Drug Task Force.
I make a motion, we send it to the full board.
Support.
Do you have the sheriff here? Do you want to hear from him or?
I don't think we need to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thanks for being here, Tim. All right, moving on to 7F, Employment Agreement, Dr. Daniel Spitz for Medical Examiner Services.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't know if you guys know this, I think most of you do, but Daniel Spitz is also the medical examiner from Macomb County. Been there a long time, vice versa, so we work pretty closely, you know, back and forth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7G, Circuit Court Manning Table Request.
I'd move this be passed to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7H, the Resolution 1730 Gradifying Collective Bargaining Agreement for Corrections Deputies and Professional Employees.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board.
Second.
Could we have final action on these two union resolutions?
We do this for final action.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call in this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7I, Resolution 17-26, CBA, 31st Judicial Circuit Court, Front of Court Employees from the year 2018 to 2019.
You want to let us. Final action on this also?
Yes, please.
I'd move this be approved for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
Just one item, you're going to have a public hearing coming to us next week regarding the Brownfield Plan for the St. Clair Inn. If any of you guys want to come down and sneak a peek next Tuesday at 2:00 PM, I'm taking the city council members and a lot of individuals just to tour the property. When you drive by, it doesn't look like there's a lot going on. You see a lot of dumpsters, but when you walk around the back and you see everything's gone out back when you walk in the hotel and see the hotels gutted, this thing's, you know, it's moving and it's for real. So if anybody has or wants to come down and sneak a peek next Tuesday at 2:00 PM, but it's roughly a 30 to 35 million dollar investment down there. Some really, really cool stuff going on that's finally moving forward, so.
Anything else?
What, did we get everything moved out of there in the way of the beds and stuff like that, Jeff? I think they were going to take them over to the, across the street.
Yeah, they donated actually a lot of the furnishings to Community Mental Health and then Community Mental Health will distribute them to the other agencies. We actually had them in the old art van building over there storing them right now and I know they've been pushing stuff out, so.
Very good.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to information only. See we have a notice of public hearing for the Township of St. Clair.
Make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, number 10, the receive and file packets.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. And I see I have a recess instead of adjournment on mine. Can I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
I have a second.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. We stand recessed.
I don't want to recess, I want to adjourn. I want to go home.